Three percent, you know, quick math is that each percent's about $500,000.
Now, when we're looking at the, this enrollment, are we saying that we're, our student count is dropped? Or that the credit hours have dropped?
Credit hours.
Do we know where we're at from a student count? Has that really changed?
Yes, it's, it's down. And I can, we actually track that daily trustee Thorpe, and I can, I can give you that information.
Trustee Elaine was just saying down eight tenths.
Down 549 students out of this morning.
So what is that in terms of percent?
It's down about five point, five point, I have here, five point.
So the average course load hasn't really changed for each student?
Four point two seven. Four point two seven.
Okay. So a little less.
And trustee Barry had asked me how that looked in comparison to other community colleges in the area. And I had remarks that, to him, that, I'm happy to get that information, but that an apples-to-apples comparison would, would need to wait until the 15th of October, which is when institutions are size report in that, at that timeframe. So that is also on our radar about what, how we're doing in comparison to other institutions. Any other questions on what this chart tries to explain?
I'd just like to, for clarification, we're talking about the general fund. We're not talking about money that's in the savings account.
That's correct.
All right, so, just for clarification, yes, trustee Elaine?
Hello.
Hi. How you doing down there?
I'm confused about this. Trustee Hamud and I just had a conversation. I told her, relax, we're not down that much from the president's update, and maybe I'm confusing total number of students versus credit hours, but this was anticipating a year-end surplus of 1.7 million, and...
That's last year. Excuse me, that's two thousand.
That's last year?
That's two thousand.
Okay, all right, so, and is the figure here, the smaller enrollment decrease of point eight, was that last year? That's not projecting?
That's last year.
Okay.
Yes.
All right, thank you.
Anybody else? Okay. Yes, trustee, trustee Hamud?
I know that we're now going to talk about what are we going to do about it, and I'll ask my questions then, I guess.
Okay.
Just making sure we're getting to that point.
Yes. The, during the first three weeks of my tenure here, I tasked vice president Daniel Herbst to give me his ideas about where we needed to go to handle enrollment. And he and I have forged into a conversation, conversation for the last three weeks, and he has started the broad outlines of his plan that will address these issues, and I believe we'll find ourselves in a positive enrollment area. It's going to take, it's going to take significant resources from, from my office and his office, and it's also going to take a lot of feedback from the constituencies within, within our college. My plan is to formalize that, that process, and then let Dr. Herbst present to the board here, probably toward the end of this calendar year or the beginning of next calendar year. Because you have to recognize that the changes that will be necessary will not be like a light switch. They will take some time to turn on and turn off. But in support of that, one of the things that vice president Chadwick had under her purview that I've now transferred to vice president Herbst is marketing and communication. I do think that Dr. Herbst will be able to make a little bit of synergy in handling the enrollment problem while also utilizing the resources of marketing and communication. And Rhonda DeLonge is here with us today, and she's already shown her skills. And Reginald Best is also interested in helping craft the public message. So you're likely to see those three names come up often in how we're going to attack this problem. But I'm happy to answer any questions you have. Just let me make the caveat that I do think it's premature for me to be giving, be giving you anything other than broad strokes about, one, I've identified the problem, two, I have identified the, the human capital that is there to meet the problem, and in the process of crafting a plan. Yes, trustee Hamud?
I think part of identifying the problem is, what are we doing and is, is it working? I know, for example, one of my questions was, when I go down river, I see billboards everywhere. I want to know if that's working. I want to know, how much are we spending on those, and do we actually have students enrolling in our school due to those billboards? Or what else are we doing in terms of, you know, marketing and advertising? Does it work? If it's not working, are we wasting our resources? So let's revisit, you know, I'd like to know what we're doing and is it effective? So whenever we can get back with that information, I'd appreciate it. I know Rhonda's shaking her head, she's working on it.
Those are completely legitimate questions, and I expect to be able to give you some feedback on that, trustee Hamud, before we roll the plan out. But certainly, a, a comprehensive plan will speak to where the future is in, in the return on investment in our dollars for marketing, and whether that is a turn in the road or keeping on with what we're doing.
Trustee Petlicoff?
No, no, go ahead.
Excuse me?
Another question I had, and I know we, we talked about this, President Cavalluna
and I, is I wanted to know, how, are we reaching out to students? You know, when I was a junior, a senior, even a sophomore, I was getting letters from colleges from across the nation. Congratulations, you've been accepted to, right? Are students around getting congratulation letters that they've been accepted to our institutions? Are they, vice president Best, are they getting, you know, some information about grants and financial aid, and congratulations, it looks like you might qualify for this? I don't know if we currently are sending those letters to schools around. I'd like to know that information.
That I can give you, all trustees, I'll give you that information by the end of this week.
Cool. Thank you. That's all for me.
Trustee Petlicoff?
One of the things that I take note of when I see advertising for other surrounding colleges, be it Madonna, who is touting their four-year nursing program now, or Schoolcraft, or Wayne County Community College, is, is that they try to separate themselves, differentiate themselves, so that students, when they're looking at them, think that they're going to get something different. How are we going to, programmatically here at the college, what do we have to offer that would really be something that would inspire students to take another look at our resources and be more willing to invest in this campus, rather than, say, Wayne County Community College, which many of them would have to pay the out-of district fees? We need to be able to promote ourselves in a way, and/or have programs that are so different from the surrounding community colleges, that we can bring in students who see the value to coming here. So we're going to have to find a way to promote ourselves and to have, have those kinds of programs that we promote that bring a second look to our campus. I'm suspecting that a lot of our loss of student is, is that they're going to where they think that they're going to get something the same for less money. That's my suspicion.
Trustee Elaine?
I, I guess I analogize it differently than trustee Petlicoff, and the first thing that jumps to mind to me is to challenge vice president Herbst, vice president Best, and who was the third person?
Rhonda DeLonge.
Rhonda, yeah, she's sitting right in front of me. We all, all native Michiganders know that we go through this boom bus cycle regularly with automotive. So are we mimicking that cycle, just hitting our peak at a different time, the opposite time? And if so, I mean, we're always told this happens, as long as I can remember being on this board, which is 18 years. Dr. Mead, of course, could remember back being an employee longer than I've been on the board. But if that's the case, then maybe the three that are challenged with the inquiry could look at what the state, or what any state across the U.S. in a similar situation does to try to even out its, its economy. I mean, normally what we hear in the mass media is that we look for other non-automotive business, so maybe we look for non-traditional students. That's obviously already been done, but, I don't know, I'm just saying that people need to maybe look not just at higher education, but look at different areas.
One more question, if you can look into.
Trustee Hamud?
Thank you.
Hi.
Thank you. I know that a lot of times we put the billboards up, we put our commercials out there. What I really appreciate are when we have recruiters actually going to schools and trying to get these students in. We can't just sit there and wait for the students to come. Are we actually going to different high schools, you know, and saying, this is what we have to offer, this is why you should come? Other colleges do that. Do we have somebody? Is it worth?
Yeah, they, they do do it.
Are they going to these schools, and, and is it working?
We don't have enough. Yeah, I mean, we do get students, we can give you more data about it, but...
Yeah, I'd love to see the data and...
Yeah, it's a company.
How, how it's happening, maybe a presentation at some point. How, how are we doing in terms of recruitment?
Right, and I think Daniel...
Rhonda, you can come on up to the podium and speak to that to the extent you want to tonight.
Sure. Don't want to take too much of your time. Thank you so much for your comments about this. It's actually really helpful for me to hear what questions you have, because I have some of the same questions, and these are great, this is a great way to frame things. I think part of what I'm realizing now is we haven't given you enough information, and actually, before Becky left, she and I were talking about doing a, a presentation about marketing, and when I was planning that, I thought it would be best for me to integrate that with other information about, for example, what we're doing in student recruitment, what we're doing in financial aid, what we're doing in scholarships, and all the areas that influence what we do, because it's all integrated. There's no single thing that has this, the only influence. Just in summary right now, I do work pretty closely with the folks in, in admissions, and they do a lot of the individualized recruitment. In fact, we're working right now to redevelop a whole suite of materials and assets they can use. So when they go to high schools, we look competitive with the best institutions, and we really look top-notch, and we have great materials that are integrated and that really tell that story that you're talking about. What is differentiated about Henry Ford College? What is the great, what are the great things that we offer? And I think we haven't done as good a job as we could of figuring out how to get all those messages into the right hands. One of the challenges, I've met with the recruiters and talked to them several times, because we've wanted to figure out how to really optimize their work. And one of the challenges is we have a lot of different target audiences, and different high schools in different areas, for example, within the metro area. There are students in, in some places that, our competitors are not other institutions, our competitors are the couch. Our competitors are minimum wage jobs. Our competitors are other things that people can choose to do with their time. And how do we generate a sense of aspiration enough to even get them to choose this kind of an education? Help them be aware of what the opportunities are and that they can access those opportunities. At the other end of the spectrum, we've got people, we're competing with really high-end institutions, and we want to convince those people, you can get the same quality education here, probably better personalized attention, for a lot less money, and we can set you up to succeed wherever you want to go. So I think there's a broad spectrum of messaging that we need to work on. And as far as mass marketing goes, frankly, one of the main reasons we do the major advertising that we do is because we need to be in the game with other schools. We need to be in the areas where people see us as a player, so to speak, as a competitor in those, in those areas. We do get a lot of students from down river, that's why you see so many of our ads down river. It's a primary point of focus for us, and we get more share of voice, there's a term called share of voice, which means all the ads that are in a particular area, if you count that as the voice, however much of that we're doing is our share of that voice, we can get more share of voice for our bucks in down river than we can, for example, in Detroit Metro. And that's why we choose that as a primary place for our mass market advertising. We do a lot of also TV and radio and streaming, and there are all kinds of things, which I'll present to you in more details. But I do want you to know that there are a lot of really, really hardworking people that you've never met here, who are doing extraordinary efforts to try to recruit students. And the one-to-one recruitment, that's where the magic is. It's when I say to you specifically, I have something for you, and that's where I think we really need to make inroads, so...
Rhonda, I really appreciate that, and I look forward to that presentation. I look forward to identifying the challenges, like you said, because then there's room for improvement.
Exactly, for sure.
When we identify what the challenges are.
Right.
And we want to be, be able to help in any way, shape, or form, you know...
Thank you, yes.
With those ideas. We know that, I mean, you have a lot on your shoulders right now, especially looking at the numbers.
Right, we do.
So it's, it's good to think creatively as to what we can do, identify the challenges. I do hope that when we do see the presentation, this is what we're doing, and follow up with, does it work?
Exactly, and we will tell you what we know about the impact. I can tell you specifically right now, it's almost impossible to track a one-to-one billboard to enrollment number, but I can tell you how they all work together, how all of these factors influence people's decision-making. There are a number of touch points, and you've probably seen this in your own life. You'll see a message in one place, then you see it in another place, and eventually, after you get enough touch points, it's in your consciousness, and then you can think about it and make a decision. So it's a lot of factors, and I'll be, I'll look forward to doing that presentation. And I really appreciate all of your pointed questions, because that's what helps us get better. That's what helps us think about these things in really critical ways, and we need to do that.
Thank you, Rhonda.
You're welcome.
Trustee Thorpe?
I'd echo what trustee Hamud said. We see the billboards, we see the advertisements in magazines and papers and things like that, but it's all very passive advertising. And yes, you start to get a saturation point where you're seeing the, the message again and again and again, but I think the more active approach where we're out there recruiting, whether it's directly to the student, but it could also be going through an employer. If we know certain, certain employers are looking for certain skills, we can reach out to them. And then you just have to hook one, and that could bring you a couple hundred students. So it's another way to do it. But I look forward to that as well.
Trustee Elaine?
Well, I don't know, what I read lately is, there's a lot of universities that are building climbing walls and elaborate dorms, and we're not going to do that stuff. So although I'm glad we're doing welcome back days or week, I appreciate that, President Cavalluna, because...
Don't take me.
Well, whoever, whoever came up with the idea, it's great.
Raise your hand if you're involved in welcome back days.
Yeah, I don't know whose idea it was.
Cassandra Lunker and the Student Activities Union is for a couple of years.
Well, I can just tell you, when my kids went to a certain university, that was one of the first things they were advertising. Yeah, look, we got this, we got this, we got activities. And it was, you know, they were like, wow, yeah, this is great. So that's one thing that, I mean, it doesn't cost a fortune like a climbing wall, so, but also, I, I'm a little bit leery of mentioning this, because I think it was downplayed last time when I mentioned it. We do have a captive population at Dearborn Schools, even though it's only 25% of our population here. And President Cavalluna, you've made some political contacts with mayors and other people in those places. I think whatever we can do to make the transition seamless, every kid at, at Dearborn Schools who's not doing anything, and they're graduating, should at least be prodded to, I know they are being prodded, but it ought to be so easy. I know Fordson was working on pressing a button and sending a transcript from Fordson here. That should be done before June, rather than after June, when they've escaped our educational setting. So I think we should try to make that really easy for students, and we should tell their, I mean, their parents should know, yeah, your kid too can go to, to college, because there's a lot of people that are first generation still, so their parents maybe don't know it, even if they do. The other thing that I wanted to say is on, on students. When my students were coming home during the summer, they had a lot of difficulty enrolling either next door or here. They had to bring syllabuses, and this is another university that tried to, deliberately tried to make it very hard for them to pick up summer credits, because they didn't think summer credits were going to be adequate to their own high standard in Ann Arbor, and blah, blah, blah. Really, it was a dodge for tuition. But making, trying to make it easier for guest students to take even one or two courses here, that would, that would really help. So, I mean, you pick up some, and whatever we pick up is, is all for the good.
So trustee Hamud?
This is the last comment. I thought of something. Would be really nice to think innovatively here too, and think of a way to give back to the community. A lot of times in my profession, we see young people who find themselves in a criminal justice system, and the court orders them to go back to, you know, attain a specific certificate, or go back to school and get an associate's degree. And we should encourage that, and maybe we can, you know, extend a hand and see how they could come here and we can help them. And I think that that's giving back to the community in a way, where they're going out there, the court is ordering them, the court can order them to go somewhere in specific, and maybe we can build a relationship there where we can be part of that rehabilitation and making sure that our young people are getting the education they need. A lot of times, it's part of the, you know, Homes Youthful Training Act, where they will not have anything on their record eventually, but they have to complete, you know, a certain certificate or something, just an idea.
I'd just like to say that this is not unusual, that the population goes up and down based on the economy. But I really am looking forward to your report, because fresh ideas, this has always been a difficulty. I've been here since 1982, and whenever the enrollment goes down, we all panic. But we need to have a good plan, and I hear what you're doing is putting together something, so let's see what you come up with, because it's not easy. It's a very difficult and, and a very difficult situation. But I look forward to it, to see just what is new on the horizon for encouraging students to come to our august institution. Next item? Oh, you're still doing it, old president.
I just want to make a couple of comments on this issue. First, I am, I've take, I've taken notes, Kathy, who's extraordinarily better than I am at taking notes, she'll, she and I will put our heads together and work with the team, and so that when you do, when you do get a report from us at this body, it will be responsive to the things you've brought up. But a couple of things I, I just want to mention, a lot of the things that you've talked about, we're doing now, and that's not to say that it can't get better, but one of the things that was mentioned that I, I just thought I would highlight is the good work that Dr. Nealon and Dr. Chapman had, have done, and is recently, I think it was, was it, when, when was manufacturing day, Pat?
Oh, the employer issue, oh, last Friday.
Last Friday. We were in this room, and this, this room was full of manufacturing employee, employers, county leadership from Wayne County, higher ed leadership from, obviously, us here, but other community colleges that were getting prepared for manufacturing day, or manufacturers' day. And that is a process, if you're not aware, it's a process where we actually foster a connection between manufacturing employers and high school students, and get them an opportunity to get to the manufacturing plant and see the work. And I think it, was it 3,000, Dr. Chapman?
300.
Thirty-two, 3,200 students reached in Wayne County. And what, what was that county to the north of us?
Nine hundred.
Nine hundred. And, and my point to you all is that there are good works going on here. We are trying to be responsive to what, what our, what our customers need, and those customers are families and students. And I expect that the report we give to you all will be various incidents of what, what I just described to you for manufacturers' day. Two more points. I hope you could see from Mr. Long's presentation that we have a talented person who, who's passionate about this and who I, I trust a lot. If, if I had asked Dr. Herbst or Mr. Best to stand up, you would have seen the same thing. And I, when I asked you for the opportunity to serve with you, I told you I would find talented people and give them the most important, difficult jobs, and I think I've done that with these people. I, I expect that when this plan comes out, you're not going to be hearing from me, although I'll hopefully know what the heck's going on. You're going to be hearing from the people who have to do the work, and I'll be asking you to help them be, and be supportive in it. But I, I really do encourage you to do what you've done today, is to give public comments about how they, how they're serving your, your community. Give them your ideas about what you think they should do. And I, we, as a team, will never hide from that, which is why I brought up the enrollment problem in my third month here. It's a problem, and it's something that we're going to have to discuss. And I don't, I'm not happy about it, but I'm not scared to discuss it, because it's something that we've got to address. And I hope that you will help me lead a culture here at this institution and in its relationship with the citizens, which is what the role you all play so well. And that is, we've identified a problem, we think it's important to fix it for the institution and for the community, and now we're going to set about trying to develop a plan. And we want your help and your insights in that. And when I ask for the opportunity to serve as your president, I ask to be your partner. And I hope what you're seeing today is, is that in effect. And if we do our jobs well, then this sheet, it, it will change. And if it doesn't change, then you should demand answers from us. So thank you for the opportunity for us to get that plan to you. Thank you for your patience while we develop it. But I'm confident that, that the talent that's on this team can meet the, can meet the challenge. Speaking of time at the college, the Michigan Community College Association is a member, we are a member, as, as every other of the 28 community colleges in the state, and they give pins to trustees who have been here for a certain number of years. Now, this one is for five years, and it's for trustee Barry. I have asked if there were any for 18 years or 10 years.
Or 22 years.
Or 22 years. And I, I'm waiting for an answer, but in his absence, I do want to recognize trustee Barry, and I will give him this pin for the Michigan Community College Association.
Good.
In fact, I can give it to you, Mr. Chairman, if you wouldn't be troubled by giving that to trustee Barry. And hard for it to be believed, but I am now done talking.
Okay.
Thank you. Next item, please.
Yay. Board of Trustees, policy updates. So as everyone knows, the Henry Ford College Office of Legal Services is in the process of reviewing and updating, if necessary, current board policies. The office is also preparing new policies as dictated by changes in local, state, and federal guidelines. Policies ready for review and approver, and approval are as follows, and they are the attendance and punctuality policy and course credit policy. So the policy committee met today, and as many of you know, we've been meeting, kind of going over these policies for a while now, and making sure that they're up to date. So far, I believe, we've went over 37 policies that have been presented to you, and we have many more to go. The two policies that we discussed today, attendance and punctuality, again, trustee Elaine was there, and trustee Nasser, along with our Office of Legal Services, I know Amy, Amy Clark was there. And, and Amy, if you're here, is she here?
Yes, she's right there.
I'm going to need your, just help if I miss anything, just to kind of update the And vice president Nealon as well was there, so please help if, if I miss anything. So the first policy that we went over is attendance and punctuality, and that policy stayed the same. We did not change anything to that policy. However, there was something that was added, and that is, to the extent that a collective bargaining agreement's language differs from this policy, the college will observe the language in the collective bargaining agreement. And hopefully, there will be no conflict, but we felt that that was important to put in there, especially if there was a collective bargaining agreement that, that differed from the specific policy. I think that that was the main, the main thing that we added to this policy.
Yes, we just made one language addition.
Employees who are eligible?
Correct. So we just indicated that employees who are eligible for paid overtime and work performed only during college and department-approved work hours, so just in addition to the language, which we'll highlight in a minute. So just in addition to the language, which we'll highlight in the next board.
As you may recall, the last time the Higher Learning Commission came, and they will be back next September, about a year from now, they had made a suggestion, not a suggestion, they had required that we have a policy that outlines the course credit hour and the definition of what is a course credit hour. We did not have that before. So we established a new policy that defines the course credit hour, and we kind of took that right from the Higher Learning Commission's definition and implemented it into our definition.
Isn't that also a state requirement, 800 minutes for every hour of instruction?
Basically established by the Department of Education. So we're perfectly in alignment with that. We were just missing a policy that stated it. Now we're fine.
Yes.
Okay, so we're not doing anything outside of the state.
Not at all.
Thank you.
They had recommended that we actually put that in, and now we can tell them that we did that. So even though we were doing it, we just needed a policy for it. With that said, another thing that the Higher Learning Commission had recommended as well is that we revisit our bylaws and that we kind of go through our bylaws the same as we're going through our policies. We've been doing that at the P-12, and hopefully, we can do it here, make sure that our bylaws are updated, there's no conflict of interest, that they're up to date with state and federal laws and all of that great stuff. We still have not started reviewing our bylaws. We were hoping we'd do that by January to make sure after the elections, we have, we know who's going to be on the policy committee and.
That will be till January.
Right. So we're going to start reviewing the bylaws after January.
Right. Makes sense.
But we want to do it to where we have enough time to finish it by September, that way we're all in agreeance, that we are up to date when the Higher Learning Commission comes. We already have it updated. We have it on our website, and we are in compliance, and we took their recommendation. We're on top of it.
I will let you know that the college bylaws are pretty much mimic, mirror the P-12.
Okay.
Because we are one, so they, so they pretty much, there isn't a lot of.
So it will be important to corroborate, then, with P-12, and that's something we'll take into consideration in January as well.
Very important work. Thank you very much.
You are very welcome.
Yeah, I know that's continuous responsibility.
That is all.
So will it be in the next board meeting that will actually be motioned to approve these?
That is correct.
Okay. So next item, please.
Okay, our next item is citizen participation. We do not have any blue cards today.
Okay, next item.
So special consideration of an action item. Are there any action items on this agenda which board members or the president wish to discuss and vote on separately? If there are, we will exclude these from the action below.
Trustee Lane?
I'd like to make a comment on.